Thank you, Ms. Schultz. So, good morning, everyone. We're excited to kick off of a very full day where we can provide the Board a lot of good information on lots of different topics. And we're here to kick off to talk about the national best practices around boundaries. The staff here, Kevin Sneed and Jessica Gillis, have done a fantastic job of looking and benchmarking other school systems to provide the Board with much more information as to how they approach boundaries. And so, this is an information session today, and we're hoping that it will provide you information that will lead to a very good discussion around boundaries. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sneed, and then he and Ms. Gillis will begin the presentation.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, I just want to make sure, as we start, that everybody has a matrix. So, as Jessica works her way through the PowerPoint, it's important to understand that the PowerPoint reflects specifically what is in the matrix, and it will help you understand what we're looking at. Jessica and the staff spent quite a bit of time on this. This is pertaining to boundary policies of local school systems.
Could I just get one quick question?
Right. So, I was just going to let him get an opening sentence, but go ahead, Mr. Mann.
We have a new printout, October 15th. It's just whole lot different from one we had on Friday.
There were some changes to headers and things like that. It will help you.
So, in my pre-meetings, usually what I do is I try to guide staff on what I think may be questions and improve the presentation by the time we get there. So, what you're seeing is today.
I didn't get a chance to see, obviously, today's printout.
Okay. You'll be okay.
There are no substantive changes to today's presentation.
So, back to the matrix and how Jessica and the staff created it. So, they looked at the policies of the school systems listed as it pertained to boundaries, and they also spoke to the planning offices of these particular locales as well. So, I'm not sure if you want, as we move through the slides, if you want to answer questions or as we go.
I'd rather you just go through. I just want to point out that at the top of the slides, as we get in, the color coding at the top of the slide references the color coding at the top of the matrix. So, that's how you can follow the slides to the matrix. And if we, you can do your presentation, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Right, that's right. So, since this is heavy lifting today, I'm going to let Jessica proceed.
Thanks. Do I have a clicker? So, for a little background, at our January 22nd work session on the CIP, the Board requested that staff benchmark our boundary change practices against other jurisdictions. And the purpose is to review how other school districts implement policy regarding school boundaries for informed discussion regarding equity, excellence, and efficiency. Excellence by creating an exceptional and comprehensive foundation. Equity by allowing boundary adjustments to be implemented impartially and consistently. And effectiveness by promoting boundary adjustments that will increase the efficiency of FCPS. The boundary adjustment matrix was provided as an attachment, as Kevin just mentioned. This presentation will walk you through the matrix. Each section is labeled A through J and colored for ease of reference. We will get into more detail for each of these in the upcoming slides. So, the matrix provided includes a sample of school districts in the Washington Metropolitan Area, the state of Virginia, and we looked at the top 50 in the United States by enrollment size. Column A is the school districts. We've included 57 school districts along with FCPS. They're listed in order by size. The majority of Virginia school districts' policies are identical to the state code. The sample Washington Metro Area schools do not include Calvert County, Charles County, Falls Church City, and Jefferson County due to limited boundary adjustment information that's available at the time of research. We reviewed the 50 largest school districts by enrollment size and have included 37 in this matrix, as the others either had identical policies or limited information available. Column B, the student enrollment, is for the 14th, 15th school year unless noted, and those noted are for the 17th, 18th school year. Section C, under types of boundary adjustments. FCPS has three types: administrative, expedited, and standard. Ten other districts reviewed provide four other types of boundary adjustments in addition to standard. This section identifies the different types of boundary adjustments included in the school district's policy. Number one, C1, is administrative, C2 expedited, C3 standard, C4 emergency or temporary, and five is the sum of the total types adjusted for a quick comparison. These 10 of the other school districts included in the matrix are Frederick County, Maryland, Loudoun County, Virginia, Prince William County, Virginia, Stafford County, Virginia, Chesterfield County, Virginia, Charlotte Mecklenburg, North Carolina, DeKalb County, Georgia, Fresno, California, and Hillsborough County, Florida, and Miami-Dade County, Florida. For FCPS, the policy includes the three types: administrative, expedited, and standard. And the different types of adjustments are determined by, and I'm going to get into a little more detail for FCPS. FCPS administrative boundary adjustments, the three qualifiers to do for, to process an administrative adjustment are: A, an emergency or overriding public need; B, new unoccupied housing requires reassignment to avoid school crowding or facilitate student transportation; or C, less than 5% of the enrollment of each school will be affected, and analysis indicates that the change will improve the operating efficiency of the school division. Expedited boundary adjustment, either A, an emergency or overriding public need requires such a change within an expedited timeframe; or B, less than 15% of the enrollment at each school will be affected, and analysis indicates that the change will improve the operating efficiency of the school division. And finally, standard boundary adjustment follows that of the state code, where a boundary adjustment's affecting 15% or more of the enrollment at a school. Other districts determine the type of boundary adjustment by one percentage of enrollment at each school, similar to FCPS. Three Virginia school districts use the effective percentage of the school enrollment to determine the type of boundary adjustment rather than the average daily membership, which is included in the state code. Two, the number of actual students affected; three, aligning geographic features; and four, emergency temporary. So, two of the 10 use the number of affected students instead of a percent. DeKalb County, Georgia, uses the number of students, five or less currently enrolled students, and the distance, no more than an eighth of a mile. The proposed boundary would change from the original to determine whether an administrative adjustment is warranted. Prince William County allows for administrative adjustments affecting 1 to 100 students. For aligning geographic features, Frederick County, Maryland, allows the superintendent to make administrative adjustments without board approval when the attendance area boundary lines divide properties. Hillsborough County, Florida administratively adjusts school boundaries when an existing line is clearly misaligned with a natural or man-made feature, such as a road, river, lake, or parcel line. Emergency and/or temporary. In Fresno, temporary assignments are used to alleviate overcrowding at a school, and most districts reviewed, including FCPS, address emergency or temporary adjustments under other boundary types. Based on research and conversations with the school districts included in this review, we attempted to identify factors considered. This became more complex as we realized some factors were listed in the policy, but we did not find evidence of these being considered in practice, while other factors were not included in the policy but were taken into consideration in practice. Maybe we should go through those factors. So, when you look at your matrix, we've listed 16 different factors that were taken into consideration. Geographic proximity, which is to minimize travel time and distance.
And Jessica, just for conversation, and I know others, this is column E, is that right?
Yes, column E, that white section in the middle.
Okay.
Thank you. So, geographic proximity, natural or man-made boundaries, reverse highways to maintain or promote safely, safety and minimize transportation burdens. Three was political jurisdictions. Four, neighborhoods, to keep neighborhoods intact. Transportation, again, Greenville, South Carolina, uses a minimum to minimize the amount of time that students spend on the bus. Six, development, like new construction of homes. Contiguous boundaries, current or projected school capacity. Cohorts and split feeders. The majority of students should come from a minimum of split feeders, or efficiency of feeder patterns were considered. Demographics, where feasible, proposed changes or revisions to attendance boundaries to maintain or promote stably segregated enrollments in each of the affected schools, and to avoid the creation of one-way schools. That was Chicago. Socioeconomics, consider the unique needs of the school population at a given campus, which may not be reflected in the data alone. Attempt to maintain diverse populations. Equitable education opportunities available for all students throughout the districts, and minimize high concentration of students from low-income families at each school. Neighborhood stability and past changes, cost to the school district, health or safety of the students, birth-to-kindergarten ratio, end achievement, academic performance, avoid high concentration of low-performing students at one school.
And to kind of pause for a moment here, just to kind of recap what we've seen. So, you can see that there are the types of boundary adjustments, and then you can see all the different things that other jurisdictions take into consideration. Again, as Ms. Schultz said, it's a lot of information to take in, so we do want to pause so that you get an opportunity, not necessarily for questions, but to at least stay caught up with the information that we're sharing. So, again, in the orange section, it shows you the different type of adjustments that are made. And then, in the section E, it gives you an example of the considerations that other jurisdictions, of the items that other jurisdictions consider when making those decisions. And the color coordination, again, shows that if it's a blue and a 1, it's included in their policies. If there's a red circle, it's operational in practice, and it's in place beyond the policies. And if there's a green 3, it is in both the policy and in practice. So, that just gives you a smattering of how other jurisdictions consider and make these boundary decisions, and whether or not it's in policy or if it's just an operational piece, or whether it's both.
Section F, in the green, prioritization of factors. FCPS does not prioritize factors. It includes, our policy includes examples of factors to be considered and notes that they are not presented in a priority order. The FCPS policy identifies two factors specifically not to consider. Adjustment shall be made without respect to magisterial districts or postal addresses, and, whenever possible, shall not affect the same occupied dwelling any more often than once every three years. School capacity, optimal usage of the facility is the priority. While other factors may be taken into consideration, districts acknowledge that it may not be possible to incorporate each factor into all adjustments. For some of these schools, the additional factors are only considered when the primary criteria, which is often capacity, indicated more than one option. Most include language addressing discrimination, such as no assignment to schools or attendance area shall be discriminated against students based on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, pregnancy, marital status, age, religion, military status, ancestry, or class protected by state or federal law. G, purple, the limit on frequency of adjustments. We have two listed here, the based on the residences and based on the school. FCPS limits the adjustment affected to the same home once and every three years. And other districts limit the boundary adjustments based on residences or homes or attendance, school attendance area, not to affect the same school twice. H, which is that light blue color, is the section implementation. This is the implementation of a boundary adjustment. FCPS adjustments implemented through grandfathering, grade-by-grade, beginning with the incoming class at middle and high schools, per the policy. School board may adopt other phasing plans, and transportation is not addressed in our policy.
And if we can just sort of go through and maybe explain that a little bit more. And so, what we normally know of as grandfathering, so, and phasing, as we make boundary adjustments, we allow certain students to remain in the building and don't actually require those students to follow through with the new boundary guidelines. And so, in Fairfax County, we allow that grandfathering at the sixth and eighth and 12th grades, because that's your final year within the school. And then, there's that grade-by-grade, beginning with the incoming class at the middle and high school. And if you look at some of the most recent boundary adjustments that we've done, if you think about some changes that we did at Cooper, for instance, we allowed students to remain at the school. We gave a variety of options. We allowed students to remain at the school, and then we began the phasing process before students actually came back to the school and didn't actually go to other AAP centers. And so, by allowing that phasing, it's something that's different than other jurisdictions. And you'll note that, as our policies state, that the school board may adopt other phasing plans and that fall outside of the policies, and that transportation is not addressed in the policy. So, I did want to, you know, take a moment to sort of let you hear that and let that sink in, because the grandfathering piece is a unique piece for Fairfax County public
Other school districts allow for grandfathering of students only entering their last year, and only if space is available. And Alexandria City Public Schools is the only school district that we reviewed that would provide transportation, and they only provide transportation to students assigned to attend another school due to capacity reasons. Procedures, the yellow section, I, initiators of boundary adjustments. For FCPS, the superintendent is directed by the school board to consider the need to make adjustments. And for other school districts, they either do a cyclical review period, they are initiated, boundary adjustments are initiated by the school board, the superintendent, school planning departments, such as facilities planning, and advisory committees, such as our FPAC. The majority of school districts reviewed identify the superintendent as the initiator, and this initiation is based upon planning data and enrollment reviews, such as the capital improvement plan. J, approval of boundary adjustments. For FCPS, the superintendent approves administrative, and the school board approves expedited and standard. Other school districts, we have a variety where the school board approves all of the adjustments, the superintendent approves all of the adjustments, or the superintendent approves administrative adjustments, and the school board approves all other adjustments similar to FCPS.
So, we've given you a lot of information today, and are certainly here to answer any questions that you might have. And there will certainly be questions, I'm sure, around the things that we do in Fairfax County and how those differ based on the research that we gather here. And so, again, we are certainly available to answer those questions and go back to any slides where things may not have been clear for you.
So, Dr. Brebrand, do you have anything before I start taking in Board members?
Well, I would say generally, one of the things, obviously, this was something the Board asked us to follow up on. We know, we heard last year from FPAC, that boundary decisions await us moving forward that will take place while I'm superintendent, and I want to better understand the Board's assessment of our current policies. Are there things that we need to make changes to, or factors that we need to consider now that we've looked across the Board nationally and locally, to help inform us as we make future decisions? So, I see this as an opportunity to reflect on the information provided and help guide staff so that as we move forward, we're doing it in a way that's informed by the Board, and we look forward to the conversation. So, thank you.
Okay. So, I have Sandy, Janie, and Megan, and then Karen.
Thank you for doing all this excellent work to help us compare with what other jurisdictions do. I guess the one thing I wanted to focus on on slide four, talking about equity, one of the things that we have to deal with as a Board and as a school system is something that I've raised in the past, which is increasing socioeconomic resegregation. And I was a little puzzled by this definition of equity, that it just be, you know, equity has many pieces to it, and I guess my comment is that we need to be thinking of equity in a variety of ways. One of the things we need to be sure is that all of our students have access to all of our programs, that all of our students have access to whether they need intensive remediation or whether they need intensive acceleration, or the highest level math classes. That is something that we've dealt with in other arenas, but I think we have to be cognizant of that when we deal with boundary adjustments as well. And so, I do see that there are some jurisdictions, including FCPS, that take socioeconomics into account. I think that that needs to be a very high factor in what we do. So, that's my comment, and I guess if you had any, any response in terms of the importance that that is given when we make any boundary adjustments, whether administrative or by the school board. They're all looking at you, Mr. Sneed.
That's fine. I'll take this one. It's an easy one. But, that the, I don't recall in any of the meetings that we've had, any boundary changes that we use that as a factor. We try to use things that were a little bit more empirical or objective, whether a school had space, we look at transportation, trying to keep neighborhoods together, things of that nature.
Well, on your matrix, it says that in column 11, E11, it has us having socioeconomics as a factor.
We do, for instance, when we looked at the change, the recent change in Luther Jackson and Thoreau, one of the things that we did look at was what would be the FRM impact to the school that was losing students, whether it was a significant amount. I'm sure if we saw that a particular boundary change would have caused, you know, a significant increase of FRM at a particular school, that everybody would pause for that. Right? And that's why we kept the AAP center at Luther Jackson as well. So, there was consideration for that. I mean, the first thing that we look at with a boundary change is just trying to react to capacity, you know? That's really the first and always the primary factor, is whether the school has the space to house the enrollment. I mean, it's always the first consideration. And the weighting of the factors, I think Jessica already pointed out that we really don't prioritize factors in the policy. And if we, that would be something that I think we would have to, you know, the Board itself would have to deal with how they want to prioritize the factors.
Okay. Well, I mean, I do, but it is correct to say that socioeconomics are in our policy and in our practice? I mean, that's what we, what this chart tells us, yes?
Yes, we did. In fact, with Jackson, that was one of the first things that we looked at. It wasn't just the quantity of students, what would be the impact to the facility or the school itself.
Okay. Well, I just think that that's something that we have to be cognizant of. I guess my other question is, it seems that we have a number of additions that are coming At what point, what's your break point for saying we're going to put an addition as opposed to we're going to do a boundary change when there's a school next door nearby that has room? Or if a program could be changed?
Well, that's a good question. You know, I recall, it was probably five years ago during one of the CIP meetings, and it was, same question arose about how do we develop the CIP from our perspective, you know? And I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just saying that boundary changes are not easy in this county.
No, they're not.
And if I'm looking at a five-year number, you know, I'm never going to be guaranteed that we're going to be able to not have to build the addition and have a boundary change. And then, a school hits a tipping point, and I'm talking about a tipping point in just the quantity of students in the facility, whether it can support it. So, that, so, I'm making the best guess that I can with the facility, whether I have confidence that an actual boundary change is going to occur. And Dr. Garza, that's essentially what she also said to the Board, was he's not certain that we're going to actually have a significant enough boundary change to reduce the overcrowding in a facility, and he knows that he has to house the students. And so, and typically, you know, if we introduce an addition, which we will, I'm not sure about this year, but in the last couple of years, we do it here in front of the Board, and we have a discussion about what growth we see. And, you know, unless somebody were to say, you know, don't plan that, I want to do a boundary change.
Well, and I know that's difficult, because boundary changes inevitably are very, very difficult, and I think it seems easier sometimes to add capacity at a school, but at some point, we probably need to bite the bullet and make sure that we're balancing out our numbers, rather than having some schools overcrowded and some undercapacited.
Right. And I do not disagree with that. I mean, we, in certain respects, we can't build our way out. I can't get through the, you know, the funding, the planning, the permitting process quick enough before these schools get very, very crowded.
Right. And the other piece of this is the warning about the more we build extra capacity, the slower the renovation queue goes, and I certainly don't want to do anything to slow down the renovation queue, as you know.
Okay, Janie?
Okay, thank you. First of all, this chart is fascinating, and, yes, thank you, Jessica, once again, it's more excellent. And I must say, staff has gotten very good at these very complicated charts, so we all have to go back to school to learn how to read them. But, thank you very much. Very informative information. I also have to say that, particularly in last year's CIP, where you developed county-wide capacity, you know, percentages over time, that was extremely helpful. And those of us whose magisterial district spans the Silver Line, Tysons, Dulles, Herndon, huge amounts of approved housing that's coming, and those on Route 1 embark and all the rest of that. The, to be able to show a community what, how the housing patterns and the master plan has already been approved, and it's coming, and where schools where we have to follow development, I mean, it's way, it's in Virginia, communities can see that something is going to have to give, and that boundary changes, new schools, boundaries and all the rest of that, and programmatic adjustments, such as simply going to have to come. So, I very much look forward to the next CIP, and as I look along the Silver Line, and as I continue to talk with my community, they understand that we cannot, that major boundary changes are going to have to come. They just are. People can see it. I do support us when change comes. It is an opportunity for us as we both build, add-on, renovate, and as the housing market continues. It gives us an opportunity to make sure that every school attendance area has a mixture of housing types, because that is often the, it has the impact on socioeconomic, so that every school has some apartments, some townhouses, some single family, and that when we walk away from some of the changes, we have not exacerbated the socioeconomic segregation, because we know that that also does not give us the best instructional opportunity for students. And I agree with Ms. Evans, that we also have to make sure that we have all the full range of programs available in all of our schools, so that we don't, do not have families feeling they have to... not have families feeling they have to flee from the school that is their normal attendance area, and is maybe closest to their home, but they've got to go somewhere else because their neighborhood school does not offer the program that they are looking for. So, I think that all of those things are important, and as I say, I, I believe in the Tysons area, I think we have to seriously consider some fairly major boundary adjustments, and I think people can see it coming. So, and for my colleagues, what's happening in the Tysons area, it's not the expensive high-rise apartments, it is the existing housing stock. Great places for people to live, the existing apartments and townhouses, there is some infill development, but it's the existing housing stock. It's a great place to live, great place to raise your family, and many families are more than willing to have a smaller housing arrangement, smaller square foot, and will stay there in order to either be close to metro, or close to new jobs that are popping up along this, or they like the diversity of the community, we are culturally, ethnically diverse, and we're proud of that. So, for all of those reasons, it is a good place to live. So, I hope to see some, some movement as we help relieve what is becoming some pretty serious overcrowding in the McLean and Marshall Pyramas, Langley renovation is done, we have space, Cooper, we've adjusted the major programs, we are getting ready for renovation there to expand that, so I think that community is ready to begin the conversation. In fact, we began, we began them last year. So, I look forward to this year's CIP, and we certainly include the families in all of this, and we work on this together. So, thank you very much for all the information.
Okay, Dr. Brabran, did you have something before we moved on?
Well, let me, let me just say, just trying to, I like to try to learn with the board, and so I want to go back to something Sandy shared. So, when you look at that E column, you see Fairfax has a lot of factors that are considered, right? When you look across the sixteen, we have a lot of them. It's important to reemphasize what was said on slide seven, we don't prioritize all of those factors. So, we have many factors that are going into play. I counted, and Jessica, check me, we have nine districts we identified that prioritize among the factors that they've listed. So, and I don't know whether among those nine, we know what their top priorities are, or do we know that from the study?
They're all capacity is the number one. If any of the school districts that we reviewed prioritize factor, the factor that they prioritize is capacity utilization.
How far down, a, a board member might ask, how far down did they go on priorities? Did they just prioritize one, or did they do multiple factors, like first, second, third?
They would, some of them will weight the other factors, with the top factor being capacity utilization.
Thank you, I just thought that was an insight into trying to figure out how does the balance come. Right now, we say we, we cover all of the factors, but there's not, there's not a specific weighting or prioritization to those, to those factors listed.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brabran. I have Megan, Karen, and then Iliam.
I'm just going to confess to my colleagues and Dr. Brabran right now that I'm trying to practice some deep breathing right now, because while I very much agree, and this is my one glow that I will start off with, I agree with both my prior colleagues, that the raw data in this matrix chart is very good and helpful and meaningful, and is a great start. But, Dr. Brabran, you just said something that you like to learn with the school board, and while that's a really collaborative statement, I don't think that's actually what you meant, or what this county and this division would expect. This isn't, today's work session is for the board to discuss what this title says, National Study Best Practices Around School Boundaries. And I'm going to first say to Kevin and Jessica, my remarks now aren't directed at you at all, so I'm actually going to look to Dr. Brabran, because it's a way of, I want to make sure that you don't feel like this is being spoken to you. Dr. Brabran, this isn't a national study on best practice, unless there's a report that I haven't seen, this PowerPoint and this chart alone, it's just data. There's, there's no analysis of it. You, you mentioned counting up the nine districts that prioritize factors, we wouldn't even know that from this, because the chart at the bottom doesn't total. So, I don't, as a board member with no staff, can sit here and count up all of these districts and say, okay, when you now take the composite of this, how many in all of these areas are doing this or doing that? And even if it's just by volume of what they do, it doesn't even necessarily mean it's still a best practice. And so, I, I would say to my colleagues, if we think this was it, this was the information we're just going to now green light and finally address a lot of backlog we have in our boundaries, we're not even close. And if we're not, then I think we, not only as a board, but again, to the public, we have to understand, where are we going with this? You know, Ms. Evans and all of us, our districts are different, and we hear and see and evaluate differences, and that is what we have to wrestle with, with the tenth largest school system, but the twelve of us can't even have a dialogue, an actual discussion, as was stated here, and partner with you on this, if we do not have the subject matter expertise and analysis first of what this says. And so, I would say as a next step to my colleagues, this was a great first start, but for anybody who thinks that this is going to allow this board, which as we've seen from this initial data, is that typically this heavy responsibility falls on the shoulders of the school board to address, we're not even remotely close at being able to actually help guide the superintendent, direct the superintendent, because we don't have the analysis for it. Boundary changes, turning back to Mr. Sneed, thank you for saying probably the thing that is the crucial point of what we're wrestling with here. Boundaries are very uncomfortable and, and typically unpopular in this district and nationwide. I draw on personal experience, having lived in Wake County, North Carolina for two years, at the peak of their boundary changes, where almost every year, they were changing their boundary attendances, and it became so volatile in that county, they wiped out their school board, they just voted them all out, they were so fatigued by the changes happening. And it happened with my husband and I, we bought our house, and three months later, the boundary changed. And so, it, it became a way that people would love to go to Wake County, because it's a phenomenal place to raise family, people just pulled their kids out of school. Non-Catholics were sending their kids to Catholic school, they just wanted stability. So, we don't have time for this work session today, for me to talk about all that I learned from that incredible time down in Raleigh, but it was powerful. And I moved back here shortly thereafter to then watch the whole South Lakes and Western boundary change that created a lot of turmoil, and I've since watched other boundary changes with a lot of turmoil. So, I know in Fairfax County, people take this very seriously. I think that, Ms. Evans, you've been a real champion of saying that we have to be very mindful about socioeconomic, you know, segregation that we see in this county and in our schools, and I don't disagree with that. But I also think that this is where, until we get subject matter analysis of what these practices are, and then recommendations from our superintendent on the study, an actual study and analysis of what these practices are, not just a data chart, then we're going to need to have a very serious conversation with our community, as Ms. Strauss noted, because we're elected to represent our, our constituency of over a million people in this county, and I don't think any of the twelve of us would want to get out in front of our community without their voices being heard. But, part of our job as elected officials is to educate and lead, and I can't lead on best practices if I don't know what they are and why those are considered best practice. So, I might have a go-back, depending on what others have to say. I really do hope other people will weigh in on whether you feel that we're ready to go, but this, along with our CIP, is not fair to Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, and that team that deals with boundaries, not by a long shot. And I actually think, Dr. Dr. Brabran, that there does need to be an actual study now from this data. I do think there need to be recommendations that you and your leadership team review very carefully and bring back to the board, that would be my guidance as the next step.
Do you have anything?
We can, we can do that. Anticipated that question.
And, and really feel that this was an overview of, of what other jurisdictions do, and, and you can note that in section E, that it is kind of all over the place, and so, really, to give the board the opportunity to see what those other jurisdictions consider, you're exactly right, by combining this with our CIP, I'm just looking at the CIP right now, and if we look at pages forty-eight and forty-nine of the CIP, there are clearly some considerations that we provided the school board when we look at capacity. There are eight different guidelines to consider with eight different criteria, ranging anywhere from, you know, looking at the efficiency by reassigning the instructional space within the building, all the way through to item H, which is boundaries. And so, thinking about what those options are for the board, and having those discussions when we bring items to the board, that's really all part of having that good and robust discussion around how we would make these decisions moving forward. So, we can certainly provide that information to the board at a later date.
Mr. Smith, I appreciate that, but this is, no, this is to Mr. Smith, this is Mr. Smith. But, I, I'm concerned that actually what I just said didn't necessarily, I didn't effectively communicate to you what I was talking about. Listing out all the factors that FCPS takes into account, that, and then for us to discuss it, it still isn't coming with a recommendation from the superintendent and the subject matter experts that are saying, while you can have all of these criteria, here are the ones that you have to take in, you have to take into these, these factors into account, because some can be competing, and then how do you decide? And if we don't get recommendations from the superintendent and team, then we're again operating with just twelve different opinions, based on life experience or feelings, not, again, on a best practice. And I will respectfully, again, reiterate, this PowerPoint that the public will see along with this board said, "National Study Best Practices Around School Boundaries", that is an overview, and you mentioned this is an overview. If that's what that was, I would say again, from a next step, you may want to retitle this, because as it stands, I don't think we'll be judged very well as a school board or a school division, that people will look at this, and we know we have exceptionally talented, highly educated people living in this county, they're going to look at that and go, that's what they would call that, because that's not what it is. And as a small next step for our clerk, to the point that Mr. Smith also made, at very minimum on this chart, at the very bottom, it needs to be a total, total numbers all the way across. It's a simple thing, but it's a lot, and again, I don't have staff that can do it, but if somebody we can figure out can, the total numbers alone would have allowed my brain to, to look at it right away and see how frequently in each one of these columns are we seeing this occurring in those school divisions?
Do we know that we can do that?
Okay, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and I'm glad I'm following Ms. McLaughlin, because when this first came up almost a year ago, in January, this was something that I had actually asked for, and this is really a survey more than a full-up study. This is kind of our appetizer on the beginning of the conversations we need to have as a county around boundaries. And so, you know, I appreciate your comments, Ms. McLaughlin, but I really hope that everybody around this board sees this as a first step in a conversation about how we want to approach this very important issue. Because as Ms. Strauss mentioned it, we have almost got a, the bookends of the county, with Ms. Strauss's district and my district, having the most intentional growth expected in the county, just by what has been approved already. We see that the millennials have concentrated their home purchases in the Huntington and Groveton areas along Route One because of the affordability, but we also see the growth along the Silverline, and we have another piece that is putting pressure on the, both Ms. Evans' district, as well as the combined districts of Ms. Darnatt, Kofax, and myself, which is that people may want to understand that Alexandria City has decreased their affordable housing over the past decade by eighty-five percent. And so, those home, those residents are moving into Fairfax County, which is having an impact on all of our schools. It's something that we are, we welcome these, these residents, but it does have an impact. Now, if we can just go through a bit, some of the parts of the presentation, I do think that it would be helpful to have a prioritization, but I'm not sure that we're the right ones to do the prioritization. The next step may be to hire a consultant who can work with your team to identify how that prioritization process should be addressed. Additionally, I think that, I don't see here, unless it's under the section that says, regarding contiguous boundaries, actually, it's the regarding contiguous boundaries that has gotten us into a bit of trouble, in how our boundaries have experienced significant pressure, because that combined with the, the continuous introduction of trailers has concentrated some of our socioeconomic challenges. And so, when we look at this, we really, I would like us to look at it as a holistic, when you've got pressure coming from two sides of the county, that maybe it's time to have a more holistic approach to how we've set many of these boundaries. Additionally, we talk about programmatic, but it seems like we only focus on the programmatic, the programs being AAP, and we do have a concentration of other programs in certain regions and not necessarily in others, which has put a pressure on our schools. I would also like us to look at the impact of split feeders and islands on our boundaries, as well as, you know, we have as a priority for this school system to introduce pre-K, and similar to when we introduced kindergarten in all of our schools, it put pressure on our, on the capacity of schools. And so, one of the things that I think is important is that as a system, if we are looking at pre-K, we should look at what the impact of pre-K would be on the capacity of each of our schools, in our elementary schools in particular, and what we would have to do if we decided pre-K was a, elementary by elementary, you know, you keep kids in their neighborhood, or whether or not, as we address pre-K, we need to have pre-K centers because of the impact it would have on the individual boundaries. Another piece is looking at the cyclical aspect, we do not look at it from a cyclical point of view, and it may, we may have had an impact on all of our schools by not looking at it as, as cyclical. And so, I think if we can dig down a bit more on looking at, you know, either a census approach, which is once every ten years, we take a look, and then I'll end with this, which is to address another thing that Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, about moving into a community based on the school, and the, the challenge that having a holistic approach to our boundaries could have on individual communities. This goes back to the value promise of Fairfax County Public Schools, and ensuring that we have a fidelity of implementation and a certain level of programming at every one of our schools in the county, and at the middle school level in particular, making sure that we have a, a level of programming that addresses the full spectrum of needs in every area of the county as well. And by addressing those type of things, then we will de-emotionalize some of the concerns... And by addressing those type of things, then we will de-emotionalize some of the concerns about having boundaries. Because we cannot continue along the way we've done for multiple decades, which is that, you know, we keep certain boundaries pristine and, no, we can't address that because the community would be too concerned about it. And then other boundaries where we have kids who are being bused for significant periods of time, high poverty into high-poverty schools. And we've concentrated the poverty into a number of schools. You know, just crossing Route 1 alone, it takes 13 minutes. And so, you miss that number, you miss that red light, and that bus adds an extra 13 minutes to the commute for our kids. And so, we should be really looking at this on a more holistic basis. So, as far as my go-back, or my follow-on, I would like to see us do a more holistic, deeper dive on what a full Fairfax County approach to boundaries would be by hiring an outside consultant to work with us. Secondly, is looking at programmatic changes to ensure that there's a consistency of programs available at a minimum across each pyramid, but also that before we add capacity or, you know, and this goes back to, we adopted a resolution last Thursday night about our carbon footprint. And that carbon footprint expands the more we do new builds and the more we increase the size of schools. And so, if there is something that we can look at more holistically, we should be. Okay?
Okay, I have Ilyum next.
Thank you. Thank you for all the information and data provided to the school board for discussion today. I never expected this to be the, like, a one-time, do-it-all, gonna come to a final conclusions on what do you wanna do for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years on the boundary adjustments. This is just the beginning of the conversation I took it. With that said, I have some questions first, and then I have some comments to follow. So, let me go to, I think Jessica, this is old material. I think she commented on the capacity, some, you know, some districts should prioritize in school capacity during the boundary adjustments on page 13. Do I understand that to be utilizing all available capacity as top, top factor? Meaning, if there is availability, you make adjustments to fill that capacity, utilize that, is that what you wanna say?
Yes.
That overriding everything else?
Right. So, school capacity or optimal usage of the facility is the priority. And for some schools, the additional factors are only considered when the primary criteria, which is the capacity, indicates more than one option. Then they start looking at other factors.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I could see that on this chart, which school districts are doing that, correct? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And the next question goes to the next page, 14. The second bullet, I didn't quite understand that. Other districts limit boundary adjustments based on residences or school attendance areas. Could you explain that a little more?
Sure. Similar to FCPS, which we limit the boundary adjustments based on the residence. So, where you live, we say you can disturb a home more than three times, we can't change the boundary adjustment. We try not to more than three times, or once every three years. So, some schools base it on if the residence, like, the home has been changed from one boundary to another, and others use if the school attendance boundary itself has been changed. Same school, limiting the number of times a school is impacted, whether it includes that resident or not.
Okay. Next one goes to what Mrs. McLaughlin earlier, you know, mentioned about, you know, doing, coming up, you know, finding best practices. I mean, I do agree to a certain extent with what she said, but my question to you is this. Do you think that there is a best practice out there where, with which majority or all of us could agree to? Or so-called best practice could be a one person's, one expert's opinion, and there could be competing opinions and competing best practices? I mean, that, whenever we talk about best practices, they come to my mind. It's not just boundary adjustments or instructional approaches, you know, program issues, even, you know, fiscal decisions we make, best practices. And I said, what if all those renowned professors who are experts disagree with each other, then what do I do? I mean, that's my question. So, first question is, are there best practices out there that you have seen but you have not provided to us? Or do you think that there are?
Mr. Moon, can I try? And then I'm gonna let these three share anything additional. In the learning while we're doing, as I reflect, best wouldn't have been the right word to have used for the presentation. It's prevailing practices among school districts. And what we're showing you is what prevailing practices are. Best, I think, and I do believe, I do believe Ms. McLaughlin's right, and I would support working with this board to have an outside lens to help us develop the next steps as we move forward. Because I know the stakes are high. The stakes are high for me, the stakes are high for the board and for the community around this topic. But it is time to have this conversation. There is no doubt in my time, no doubt in my mind, this is the right time to begin having this conversation. I do think, and I would want to, this would be a question to ask the consultant, and you all can add, best may be defined as, does the policy achieve its intended outcome based on the factors that are in the policy? So, if capacity, which is the districts that have prioritized, have made capacity their number-one factor, has that outcome occurred? So, I think that's frankly, if we keep, if we want to try to do best, I think it's better alignment. Do the policies and practices that school districts have created, have those policies done the intended outcome that the boards expected? And I think that's a question we can ask the consultant. Where have districts been able to achieve what they wanted and where have they run into difficulties? And I think that could be one of the questions on the table.
As a follow-up to what you just said, Dr. Brabran, what if, I mean, on the school board, where school system comes up with what it's looking for, its ultimate goals, then what it considers to be the most important factors, whether prioritized or non-prioritized matters, then there could be best practices to achieve those. But if the board...
That's right. That's right.
Is not quite sure of what the ultimate, ultimate outcome is looking for, or not sure what to do with all these factors, then I don't think there'll be practice there where, unless you're telling me that, that there are practices, best practices, that board should be looking into to set up prioritization of the factors, what the goals that you should look for. Because I don't know whether this came in this particular opportunity that board had in the past was after Mrs. McLaughlin and Mrs. Scherz and Mr. McGarvin became a board members, or before that. But we, you know, long ago, many years ago, the board really wrestled with all these factors. And the reason that we do not have a prioritization of those factors was a result of that agony that the board went through. Just board just couldn't decide on the prioritization. We looked at all, at every, every different boundary situation, brought in different factors to be considered to be more important by different board members. So, it was difficult to set the order. So, they say, okay, these are the factors we're gonna consider, and that was it. That was the end of discussion because we just couldn't come up with anything we could or agree to apply whenever we have a boundary situation. So, I welcome an opportunity to see whether there is a perfect way to do it, but I haven't seen one. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Moon, I don't know if there's necessarily a perfect way to do it, but I do know that as we went through the initial strategic plan process a few years back, it was important for the board to consider, you know, mission, vision, values. And as you think about those items that are important for staff to consider and for the board and community to consider, it really gets to what are you looking for as we think about a boundary process? What's most important? As I look at the items here in E, is it keeping neighborhoods together? Is it ensuring that we're able to provide transportation? Is capacity the number-one issue? Is it a socioeconomic lens? And so, it really does tie back to a process of the tying your decisions to the values of the board and then building a plan or a process that's tied to those values.
The board considered to be all those proximity and demographic and program and transportation, even the transportation issues, even the sign career, all those things to be equally valuable. So, it was hard to really, board to conclude that this factor overrides this in making decision at the time.
And if you look at our current practices, we kind of see that we provide much more flexibility than other areas that might say, we're going to go with capacity and maybe one or two other considerations versus, if you look at the phasing, we offer phasing at 6th, 8th, and 12th. And then we look at a variety of other factors as we think about phasing. And then if that doesn't work, we'll look at another set of factors to consider for phasing so that we can ensure that the community feels good about the decisions that we're making. So, it really is tied to, you know, the values that the board establishes and then sticking to those values as you're, as you're making decisions about boundary processes.
Okay, I have Dahlia, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry.